Good, Dustin, any changes to the agenda?
No, but can you read that at the top of the agenda of the announcement?
This meeting is being recorded. The recording does not constitute the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. And no, no revisions.
Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to the minutes. I'd accept the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from December 12th. Second.
Any, I reviewed them, looked good to me. Any questions or comments from anyone? I'll call for vote all.
Sorry, there's one more, Lauren.
Call to January 16th.
Motion to approve the minutes from January 8th. Second.
Any comments or additions or corrections to the January 8th minutes? Seeing none, we'll vote on both. Call for vote all in favor sticking by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Recognizations and commendations, Dustin?
Yeah, we're trucking into the second semester, or the end of the first semester going on to the second semester now. You know, really, every year, it goes so fast. So really, the faculty and staff, we had a lot going on over the summer, which was a lot of construction that even carried on into the September. And there's lots of big programming going on. So everybody's worked really hard. And we're at the halfway point now of 2023, 2024, which is hard to believe. But just want to publicly recognize everybody for all their hard work or part of your career.
Yeah, I think Dustin, I wanted to add to that, you know, I had the experience of working with some other students from a different school district on college application stuff. And the quality of the letters of recommendation from Lone Peak are, you know, so much higher than what other schools are doing for their kids. I really wanted to give a shout out to all the teachers and counselors and, you know, who do the letters of recommendation for our kids. Because it's a, it's a pretty big lift when you have kids applying to all these great schools. And, you know, I can see that other districts in Montana aren't providing that.
Great, thanks for that addition.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I sent this to you yesterday. I'll kind of just hit the highlights of it and take any questions. Enrollment, I had six known for 1,200 enrollments at the conclusion of the semester. We found out about more today. So we're at 394 right now. We also know that we have some coming in. But until that paperwork hits, I'm not going to reflect on the new official count. And then I thought it appropriate, just through my report, and this report will become a part of the permanent minutes and the permanent record of this meeting officially after today's meeting. I thought it appropriate to just kind of brief the board on kind of the discipline policy procedures that we follow here in the district. I mean, the policies are policies that are in line with Montana law. And then the procedures that we use as school administrators to implement those policies across the day-to-day. And then I would also just, I want to make just a comment of, you know, I love the open meeting laws and the public meeting laws in the state of Montana. I love that people can express themselves during public comment periods. We're seeing more and more across the nation, people expressing comments in school board meetings and other kind of governments, collective official meetings. And again, I'm a huge proponent of this. It is sometimes troublesome to me, people can just, like, they can say whatever they want, whatever they want without the board or people whose positions are being attacked without having any opportunity to respond to that in those meetings. It's just not a thing at all. That said, so, you know, every day here in the school, we have to sit down. That goes with having a school that has 300,000 kids that have to come from the school to teach. There's a teacher, a kid conflict, a parent, a teacher conflict, a kid conflict, kid-to-kid conflict, right? So those kinds of things we're dealing with a lot. And we have a lot of ways that we can approach dealing about how we deal with those. The number one, the number one thing that we always need to do in the review of the discipline issues is keep in mind here that across this person, the student always has a right to defend themselves all the time. We have some tools that are exposed, right? We have really good camera coverage in the school. We have interviews, right? That's probably where 90% of discipline issues are solved, is through interviews, right? We talk to the students, we talk to anybody who might have witnessed the incident. We talk to anybody who heard about the incident, anybody who reported the incident. And then from that, right, we try to separately glean out all of the facts and then move from there towards consequences. You know, we hear about disciplines and teachers, we hear about it from other students' reports, we hear about it from parents. Kids report on each other. And the one important thing that I want the board to understand, every incident that's reported is located. If somebody dumped milk in my locker in the cafeteria, probably isn't going to get looked into as deeply as if someone punched me in the abdomen, right? But every incident is taken extremely seriously by our administrators and making sure that they don't, as a label. So the policies that the boards approve are in this packet. And then, you know, you figure out the severity of what happened, what really happened, first of all. And then the severity of what happened. And then you make a, a very, a punishment consequence based on that. And I know that we hear a lot about zero tolerance and there are certain things, you know, certainly federal law dictates that a student brings a firearm to school. That's zero tolerance, right? And that's one of the few things in the state of Montana that the board can expel a student immediately for without any hearing or anything else. And then, you know, from there, you make a consequence that hopefully deters their behavior. That's how we work. And, you know, zero tolerance is really pretty difficult, especially when we're talking about third to fourth graders, you know, to make them move to expel a student using the elementary school. Plus procedures, plus protocols follow the exact same thing. And then again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I just put in my, you know, in my report. There was one particular incident mentioned in public comment that I myself investigated with the elementary counselor. And it was different than how it was portrayed. I appear to go into, you know, factual, a long story about that. But, you know, I think we all know that when a student is in fifth grade, sometimes what they take home is exactly what happened in fifth grade. So with that, I would take any questions and ask the principals to be ready to answer any questions as well. I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I think over my, you know, 16 or 18 years, there's only once or twice we've really had anybody kind of come to the board and question, you know, an issue along those lines. So, you know, I think there's a lot of institutional knowledge that you're putting into that and you and the team, so thank you.
Maybe I'm just having some PTSD from all the public comments the neighbors made at the light hearing.
Anything?
No, no.
Yep, that's great.
So move on to Marlo's report, high school principal.
Thanks, Lauren. Academics, we're in finals this week for high school and middle school's wrapping up the semester. We'll have reports to parents and students next week. This is a shout out. Will Sheehan, grade eight, was awarded the Governor's Youth Hunting Writing Contest Award. One of eight students across the state. We got to go have lunch with the governor last week. Took him into his office and kind of showed him all of his taxidermy and so forth. It was a really cool experience for him. So we're really proud of him. He wrote a fantastic story that was published in the hell in the newspaper.
And he won the raffle for a guy in a deer hunt.
What? I didn't hear that. That's amazing. Yeah. We have mass testing for middle school next week and then we're beginning the preparations for the ACT for the grade elevens. And that will be online again as it was last year. And that's scheduled for March 26th. For student life, to balance all this testing, we've got ski days that begin next week, which is going to be really fun. Middle and high school are going on the same day, so we'll all be on the mountain. We're three Wednesdays in a row. And then the American Legion declamations contest is coming up, January 24th. We have Sadie Hawkins dance for high school on the 27th. And then we have our blood drive on February 19th. And from a faculty perspective, we're finishing our book studies next week and then presenting our findings to each other and beginning our second non-tenured evaluations. And then once that's done, it's planning for next year. Any questions?
Great, thanks, Marlo. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to Brittany with the elementary report.
Yeah. A lot of similar stuff in the elementary building. We're excited to start ski days next week. It's always a little nerve-wracking, trying to make sure we come home with the same number of kiddos that we went up there with. But we've got some great collaboration and Anita has organized ski days this year. And for the first time, we're going to do an all-school assembly, so if there's shared expectations around kids' behavior at the mountain, which will be really nice, we'll have that at the end of this week. We are right smack dab in the middle of our mid-year benchmark testing. That's in full swing and will continue for this weekend, next week. We should have it all wrapped up by the end of next week. Non-tenured evaluations are going on right now, which are, it's always fun to spend some extended time in the classroom and get to see what's happening with the kiddos and their learning. We also conducted a scrub-in, which is like the informal opportunity for staff to see each other teach. We did that, I think, last week with our specialist teachers and they provide feedback on a rubric they constructed to one another. So that was fun. And then we have a team scheduled to go to some PYP training this June, which is really exciting. So with the conclusion of that, we'll have 100% of our teachers trained in some sort of formal training this year, which is really exciting. And I think that's it. Oh, and right up there, you can see the Peace School. That was dedicated. There was a nice article in the Big Sky newspaper about that. That was led by fourth grader Mr. Dan. So, any peace block. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Brittany. Seeing none, we'll move on to the diploma program report from Tim.
Relatively short report today with the big focus this week being with our DP teachers and students focusing on exams right now. Recently, in the past couple of days, I've been rotating, starting to work with our IB teachers, reviewing some of the backend system information to support them with uploads of student work, which is really starting to begin this week. Our students will be sending off their extended essays and theory of knowledge essays this week and next week to the IB for evaluation. And they'll continue that process with other major assessments and their courses throughout the next several months. In addition to that, Mrs. Martinez and I are working together to prepare our annual presentation to attend through, detailing different academic groups at LPHS. This presentation includes our onboarding and introduction to the IB diploma program. And we'll continue to go over the requirements and opportunities students have for pursuing that as a full diploma candidate and continuing our honors academic route, but also really making sure we communicate that opportunity for course credits through the IB course candidate option too, which all students in those courses have access to. We're planning on right now a timeline, looking at February to start that process, holding that meeting. And then students will work closely with Mrs. Martinez over that time for the next couple of weeks after that, to start making choices. And we'll have more on enrollment extension after that. And that concludes today's report.
Questions here? Moving on to Mr. Hannes's report.
Yeah, he's kicking off middle school basketball. You know, basketball is about 50% of the way through the season. So we'll be trucking towards district tournaments, second week of February. Just finished the MHSA annual meeting. The biggest thing that came out of that is we've been realigned again. It's eight-player football, so the state moved to four divisions, 10 teams per division. We picked up three teams that are located on American Indian reservations in Montana. So we are going to have a little bit longer road trips, depending on how often we go on the road. And then the, so the newcomers are Saint, Saint Le Bre, Lame Deer, and Lodge Grass. Those are the native schools. And then the other newcomers to our district are going to be Twin, Twin Bridges and Park City. And we'll drop Shoto, Cascade, and who else is up north? Sims. So the top four will go from every district. And that was the biggest thing that came out of that. That impacts us.
You're going to see a lot of Montana by the time you're done.
IB, those are long.
Great, thanks. Moving on quirky to the financial report.
So a couple of things. First of all, our elections is May 7th. The declaration of candidacy forms are available now. So we'll have two open board seats. At this point, we don't have anyone running for those spots, those positions. In addition, we'll have, the board will have to make a decision regarding a general fund levy. Right now, on our enrollment, we're looking at about $120,000 potential. That will have to be decided upon next month with the resolution calling for the election ballot language, as well as establishing a dollar amount if you choose to go for the levy. $120,000 is a little over 1.1 mils, so a dollar fifty for $100,000 of home value. So a million-dollar house, it's fifteen dollars for a year would be the increase for that. Another piece of that is, we will do the Senate Bill 307 notification next February also. That's the remiss of levies associated with the school district. We have to publicly, the board will have to take a motion of those. We have to put it in the newspaper, so it has to be done next month. And besides that, obviously watching enrollment, the spring count is February 5th. So we'll see where we end up for the year.
The House will forward it as tomorrow.
Oh, that's important. Good luck with that. Mr. Blessings on top of it, as always.
Ready to rock and roll.
Good, good. Smiling and dialing, all right. Okay, so I think we move on to committee reports. Look to the personal committee?
Yeah, so I'm, my two committee members are absent today. We met and we really kind of talked about what we're going to talk about a little bit more in depth in discussion and actions number three and four concerning job descriptions. So I'm happy to wait.
We'll talk about then. Okay, all right, fine. And then, do you want to do the IB Design Tech Housing Project?
Yeah, that would be great. So we have, we have led by Andrew Blessing, Grady Toll, Garrett Stoudt, and Mr. McCray here, Finn, to talk about a project that they've engaged in that I think is, is really impressive.
Guys, go for it. Yeah.
All right, so this is our DT project that we've been working on this semester on additional teacher housing.
So the whole thing kind of began when we kind of realized that, like, there's not enough teacher housing here. And then this would be able to provide teachers, like, as our district is ever growing, with the housing that they need. Because cost of living in Big Sky is 62% higher than the national average, which teachers are kind of already struggling in to find housing. So, and then because of this, like, start that we had, we sent out a survey to all the teachers in our school. And our first question was, do you currently live in teacher housing? And only 32% were able to say yes, which was a pretty tiny amount, even with our tiny school. And then we asked them if they thought there was a need for it. This went to all teachers. And 100% said yes, that there was a need. That kind of prompted a further investigation.
I'm trying. So this is our, this is another pie chart based on the survey. And so this is based on if new teacher housing was implemented, would you consider running a space? And so over 50% said yes, so just showing the need again that it's definitely there.
And then, so kind of like, what we came up with is, is in place of the current tennis courts that are kind of like going downhill quickly. Yeah, you can kind of see in that chart, there the red are the housing. And then it's kind of hard to see, but there's other places that the leach fields are. And we made sure to design around that, so they're not affecting any existing infrastructure except for the tennis courts. And then it'd be six or more one-bedroom, one-bathroom homes with parking space in the center. And then we kind of looked at several different companies and different types of homes. And then we laid it on the ones that we'll show on the next slide. And then they're like fully pre-built, fully finished homes, so they're pretty easy to, like, bring in here. It's not like having a full construction site all over again at the school. And then there's also an option for two-bedroom, 700 Scrifford houses from the same company that look the same. So it's not like a big change depending on what. But like, we figured out that, we asked all the teachers that live there right now, and they said that they would all like to have no roommates living solo. It's kind of a common theme.
Exactly. So in our course of investigating what we would need for teacher housing, we looked at, basically it came down to two options for getting these houses into place. Now it's just your traditional manufacturer built-on-site, from the ground up, stick-built. That proved to be very, very expensive in this area, as I'm sure we all know. We talked to John Celia at Celia Construction to get a rough estimate of what that would cost for us. And for 500-square-foot house at about $300 a square foot, you're looking at $150,000. And that doesn't include the architectural cost, the cost of actually designing this. The next thing we looked at that was, that proved to be much cheaper, was the manufactured, pre-manufactured housing. These would be just trucked in and set on a pad or a foundation. The houses that we looked at would require some sort of at least a little crawl space, but that's it. For the same 500-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bath, it's $130,000. And for the two-bedroom unit that Finn was just mentioning, that's another 200-square-foot bigger. It is $160,000. But that, that costs includes the cost, the rough cost of delivery, but it doesn't include the construction of the cinder block foundation that it needs. Yeah. So this is the housing that we were looking at. It's made by Riverside cabins, which is a Montana-based company. So they will ship it, truck it up to here. And it is insulated and built properly to withstand what the elements in Montana. So it's not, it's not going to be something that we're going to have to retrofit to try and get it to work here. Like I said, the cost is around $132,000 per unit. It goes up to 160 if you go, if we, if you use that two-bedroom unit, that's 200 square foot bigger. Both of those types of housing, they follow this almost exact same floor plan. The two-bedroom unit just has one more bedroom on the backside of this and a hallway running down the side. But as you can see, these are, they would come like this. They're fully finished. The only thing they're missing would be your couch and dining room table. And they're ready to be hooked up. And from my understanding, what the manufacturer told me, they would be, they included in their cost is the cost to hook it up to sewer and everything. And their, apparently their earliest delivery time would be next November if we were to move forward with this.
So this is what we've been working on this semester. So we've learned a lot about building houses using different software and just using our hands. And so this is what we've built this semester. We built a floor plan with two walls. We sheathed it and learned how to do electrical. And so we, and we also used Revit to create like what our version of the house might look like. And so, yeah, we've just learned a lot of different ways to build houses and techniques.
Thanks for your time, eyes. Are there any questions?
Good job, you guys. You mentioned that earliest delivery would be November. Is it November 24th or November 25th?
November of 2024. Sorry, I said next November. I was doing this in 2023.
Yeah, you can. There's a net disaction item. Yeah, I saw that. And then what kind of infrastructure do we need to put in, if any?
So according to what we've done, we should hopefully be able to link these houses into the existing drain fields that are the current teacher housing and the drain field that was designed to accommodate the, hopefully, the new gym. And then other than that, it's just your standard electrical and water to it.
I think one additional thing might be, so, yeah, I don't, I think the leach fields might need more investigation. So it'd be the water-electric drainage and then the pavement infrastructure. There is curving in place out of the new parking lot where they brought down the sidewalk. So we believe you could put a driveway into this area without doing the curving.
And a lot of things are already up there. The systems aren't, weren't overdesigned in the first phase of housing, but they're, they'll be easily adapted, could be easily adapted.
Guys, I've got a question. First of all, Darren, Finn, and Grady, I mean, really excellent presentation. I mean, it's so thoughtful that you guys are looking out for what's the biggest issue for the district is how to find housing for teachers. And the more, and the better your housing is, the better teachers you can retain. So thank you, guys. I think this is the most crucial issue towards the success of the district over the next 10 or 15 years. And we're really proud of you guys for addressing it. Just a couple of follow-up questions. This, this Montana-based company, you know, where are these cabins currently? And, you know, do we have a sense of how they've stood, you know, in their locations over five or 10 years?
We do not.
Do, do we have a sense of what the monthly, you know, heating charges are? You know, I mean, assuming they're electrical, but rather than gas.
I don't know the exact cost. I do know these are insulated to, insulated up to code, so they wouldn't. So heating is not going to be a huge cost. It'd be what it would cost to heat any 500-square-foot house.
Right.
Yeah, I do believe they're electric-based, right? Yep.
Electric-based, right. Okay. So, I mean, you know, again, it'd just be, it'd be nice to get some, some estimates around those numbers and maybe we can base them off that. But I just recall that when we built the existing teacher housing, we actually had some examples in West Yellowstone so that we knew we had the right amount of insulation and thickness on the walls, you know, to deal with what we faced rather than what they might get, you know, in other parts of Montana. And, and how many, how many spaces, I couldn't see the map very well, but it looked like maybe there were six identified locations where we, where we could get hookups and we could build an access road. Is that right? Or was that, was I just looking at the wrong part of the drawing?
We had mapped it for six. With a little bit more investigation, you could probably fit a few more units in there. But that would require a little bit more detailed survey.
And, yeah, that's the location, Lauren.
And, and what are, what are the, what are the, what budget resources do we have to, you know, consider this? And what buckets could we look at, Dustin, if the board wanted to move forward with more serious analysis?
Yeah, so I have it as discussion and action number five for some exploratory work, which can come out of some of the leftover bond dollars. And then if you wanted to move forward with the actual project, depending on what the engineer comes back with, we have actually a handful of places we could get that. You know, if you remember, two sessions ago, the legislature passed the rule that, you know, districts can now borrow money without the taxpayers' permission, provided you put your general fund levy up as collateral or your general fund up as collateral. And, you know, if you're talking about buildings for lease or rent, you know, that could be a way you could rent it just like a traditional mortgage, for example. You know, that's also something, probably we could go to the Housing Trust, possibly Big Sky Resort Area District, to split some of those costs and find a partner in the community that could help us once we get a little more dialed in on the, on what the actual costs are going to be. And, and what I'll be suggesting in number five is, you know, up, just expenditures up to a certain amount to work with the same engineering company that did the previous project with HABIT's hat. Because there will be some things, and they're very good with the county and they're very good, they know our property very well. Because we would, there would be some permitting processes that we'll, we'll need to nail down and have the permits in hand before I think we allocate a bunch of monies. But we have everything from a traditional path, just like a private homeowner would do, you know, through a traditional mortgage where he's sitting next to me shaking. To, you know, levying those dollars, seeking it from the, directly from the school district taxpayers or finding a partner. I wasn't very excited about an additional housing project until, until I talked with Andrew about, about this particular one, three weeks ago.
And I think, you know, the one thing I would add to that, Dustin, is that, you know, is And I think the, you know, the one thing I would add to that, Dustin, is that, you know, is it, is it the highest and best use of the land? Like, assuming we're on a trajectory where housing, where it will never be properly affordable for teachers. How much of our available land that we could put into teacher housing does diffuse up? And how does the density compare to, to, you know, another model? I mean, it looks pretty reasonable from my perspective, but if we were taking up twice the amount of land that we could get, you know, with a little bit tighter density, then I think we'd need to at least be aware of that before we went into it.
Yeah, fair. I think, and we can ask the engineers to do that.
Okay. But again, I really compliment the students on bringing this idea forward. It sounds exciting. I'm sure it's a support, taking the next step, which I guess we'll discuss in item five. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Nice job.
Nice job, guys.
All right, move to discussion and action items. For a motion on the Bridget Care Partnership?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bridget Care lessons for OMS and OPHS as presented.
Second. So those are in the packet. They're, they're the same ones that were in there from November that we tabled. There might be a slight change in 12, and Marlo has a meeting with them later this week. If there is, the 12th graders will not get a lesson until that, if there are any changes, until that lesson comes back to the board.
Great. Any questions from the board? I would just give the same caveat I always give. Make sure you look through those documents. Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Past is unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the liquidation of the school district property as presented.
Can we get a second from?
Second.
So we have a bus and some music equipment. You know, the imagination station is not in use any longer, and we, that can either be donated or sold. We've removed all the tech-related equipment that was, were school district assets from the bus. And it's been sitting over for two years, over, you know, our bus facility for two years. And honestly, the, you know, the HOA for businesses is kind of getting on my case to get it out of there. The bus achieved the kind of goals that it was set out to achieve at the very beginning, when, you know, when they first started talking about the bus. I think they made three buses, three school business with it, did some stuff at the, at the farmer's market with it. And honestly, we just don't have a need, a need for it anymore. The bus was donated to us anyway. If you remember, the PTO bought it off of the school district and donated it right back. So I would recommend, you know, we'll follow all of the state rules about liquidation of school property. We'll post it, we'll put a price on it, we'll try to sell it if we can, you know, we'll just, we'll just probably junk it. I don't even know what we'll start at this point. And then I attached the list that, that Tim Sullivan sent me of music equipment that he has for liquidation. He has a bill, a buyer lined up for that. We have to follow those same processes and post it and say, this is what we're doing with it. And if some taxpayer in the district will get first chance at all of that equipment, should they want it. If not, then we'll, we'll sell it to EPRO. After the two-week, whatever it is, two court, you'll take care of it after the two-week posting period. Any proceeds from that will be used to service his current equipment and make purchases for the music department as they come up. As for the bus, I mean, if we, if we do have any proceeds, we'll, we'll pay down the transportation or. Yeah, we'll put it back into bus depreciation. I don't anticipate a lot of proceeds from the bus. So, that's.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Past is unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description as presented for school safety manager.
Second.
Just give three.
I think we're off.
Three, yeah.
Just add.
Okay, so approve the job descriptions both as presented.
Now, second as well.
Yeah, so this is the structure of our, this reflects the current structure of our business department. So as we, in the last iteration of the strategic plan, one of the buckets was to get these positions aligned, kind of the support and leadership positions in the district. So you're going to be seeing these, and this is what we talked about in the personnel committee. You'll see these over the course of the next probably three board meetings as we get these aligned. That'll give us a good anchor as an organization for when, you know, we never know when things are going to start to shift within the different departments. Then we'll have these job responsibilities and duties really outlined. And then, you know, depending on when people, if we need, if we're in need of a new business manager, then we can tailor make, based on what we know the responsibilities are out of that office. We can tailor make a different job that we'll post for or same kind of jobs that we'll post for. Really, I'm trying to get the bucket ticked in the strategic plan, but also get those, get the organization in a place where there is some flexibility when we, and not flexibility where we're creating something, but where we can bring those jobs together or keep them separate or create based on what we know the duties and responsibilities are.
Questions from the board?
No.
Okay, call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Then starting in report.
Yeah, it's the same.
Make a motion to approve the job description as presented.
Second.
So this is the school safety manager. We approved this in December of 2022. And then we had a lot of conversation about the school marshal program through the legislature. And then it kind of, you know, faded toward, leaned towards the, the school marshal position. The Galton County Sheriff called a meeting with Matt and I and asked us to go back to calling this the school safety manager due to some, what he saw as inconsistencies in the legislation that would not have allowed Matt to fully participate in their trainings. Whereas, so in 2025, he plans to address those with the legislature. But, so the, the school safety manager is essentially the exact same job description, can, has all of the same benefits and everything else that the school marshal position had. But this way, then he can participate in the Galton County Sheriff's trainings worry-free from the sheriff's perspective. So this really came directly from the sheriff. So there was, the one big inconsistency was you couldn't participate in the trainings. And you couldn't be a school marshal in Montana unless you met all of the requirements to be a law enforcement official in the state of Montana. To be a law enforcement official in the state of Montana, you have to be a person of association. And to be a part of that association, you have to be employed by a law enforcement agency.
Effectively, this is just, it's Matt's position with the new title.
It's Matt's position with the original title. Yes.
Back. Yes.
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, make a motion to approve the $25,000 for preliminary, preliminary work on expanded employee housing on the BSSD campus.
So as I mentioned before, we can make, you know, we can have much further conversations down the road. I'd like to, to work with Allied Engineering. They'll, they'll work by the hour for us. Just to kind of get a good idea on infrastructure, on, you know, what is up. Because then we'll at least have something we can know, find out what it's going to really cost. 25, we're more than enough. We have the, some of the bond funds left over. And I would start on that right away. I think, you know, getting something in place for November, for a November delivery would be really, really challenging for us. But I think if we can have something like this in, in the books and a good funding mechanism in place by like in October and accept delivery of some additional housing units sometime in fiscal year 25, that'd be amazing.
That's definitely a need. Do we have the money, though?
No.
Down the road. So I mean, I think if.
Especially when we're facing.
So we're, we're looking at, well, it shouldn't impact the general fund. No, really, at all. So what happens with our building for lease, our building for lease or rent dollars right now? So we put that in a, in a separate fund, building for lease or rent. And we can't use that for anything other than the asset that that money's come from. So we can't, you know.
How much do we have sitting?
We don't have much because we had to finish landscaping last year.
So it's not much.
It's even.
It's even?
Like zero?
Zero.
Okay. So we get, I think we, we pay the property manager 13% to manage them. So that's one way, again, as I said, we generate revenue. The one thing we cannot do with our current housing is we couldn't, we couldn't rent a room to somebody who does not work for us due to levy language. So we ran the levy, it was specifically around employees of Big Sky Resort District. If we were to go another route, or even if we went for a levy, just we could pay closer, different attention to the language and the levy. And then they would never sit vacant.
As a practical matter, do we want to rent to non-employees?
I mean, as opposed to, I think, sitting empty, that would be my recommendation to the board, would be to, to rent them out. And there was, I, I, there was a lengthy School Administrators of Montana thread about housing projects across the state. And they had different rent rates, grant rate for school employee, rent rate for normal community member.
If we're not renting to school employees, that is a defeat of purpose to have in housing or school.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if you had those kind of units that were shown there, you wouldn't have any, any empty ones. Again, with, I think, I think that independent living is a big piece of, of what we're looking at here. And, and cheaper, so, you know, you can rent a two-bedroom, one of our two bedrooms even for, let's say, 35% more than what one of those may cost. And you would still rather have that if you were living by yourself. I, I think if we did 10, it would probably be pretty ambitious, maybe plan for 10 and start with 6. And see, I think the funding streams, Matt, I, I think we would be able to afford it in some non-traditional ways.
All for non-traditional funding.
Yeah, you need to start, the rental income will pay for the debt.
Yeah.
The down, and the board has a decision, the autonomy to secure the debt associated with building those. The risk is that we have to alter the risk, that we have to put up, the general fund is our collateral. Now, a bank may say your general fund's negative, they're, that's the reasonable side. But that's the risk associated with the debt.
Are we paying the same interest rates everybody else on the open market's paying, or are they?
Yes. Yeah, typically, it's going to be, it'll be a, it'll be an adjustable rate. You know, our debt associated with the bus bar jumped from 1.5% to 6% in the last year. So, yeah, it'll be.
But we know that's first security for that.
We probably got, yeah.
Yeah.
But still, there's still a market a little bit.
Yeah.
100%.
And, and again, right, I, I think this would be a place where we could partner with the housing trust or, you know, Big Sky Resort Area Tax District. And, and I'm happy to do all of that once we kind of figure out what we might be.
Probably saying like for rentals and for employees would be similar to what we have now.
I think you'd structure it the exact same as what we have now.
As long as it's the same, markets no more than 20% under market, right, against a tax law issue.
Have we talked to Allied or anybody else about donating some time to this project?
I mean, I'll ask him, you know, I mean.
Sure they don't need to, but.
Yeah, I, I can, I can run it by him, because I'm sure he would just like to work on the project. And, and see, or maybe try to whittle down the hourly rate a little bit. I mean, they charge us full price when they're ready for Habitat, or they charge Habitat full price.
And is this not a Habitat sort of thing we could do again?
No. No, I don't, yeah, Habitat, I don't think. Or this will be on us. But again, I think there are some ways we could, we can figure out the funding.
Yeah, and that's my biggest concern is.
Yeah, mine too.
How do we get the funding, or how do we pitch it to the community? Hey, we're doing this thing, but we're already in the negative, and also we need some more money from you for some other stuff.
Yeah.
You know, people got fussy the last go-round. They're going to get fussy, you're going to support teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the best route probably would be either we figure out how we can, like, you know, more of a traditional loan and payback. Or, you know, we're, we partner with Big Sky Resort Area District on it. Because that's a big one of theirs, too.
Sure. And the big ask is for the down payment, right? We can, we can likely get a loan, but if you're talking 10 units, that's like a million and a half, round number, so.
750.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're putting much down just to get it on.
Yeah, and if you had the 750 from the Resort Area District, then you might be a little more comfortable putting your general fund as collateral.
Yeah.
As opposed to a 1.5.
Because we wouldn't ask for a levy of any sort, obviously, because we're going to be doing one anyway.
It's, we wouldn't have the information suited up for this cycle, anyway.
Okay, good discussion. Anything else, or I'll call for vote. Just want to congratulate the kids. Good to see the creativity coming from Mr. Blessing and your students. That was, that was really fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks.
Call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Past is unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the CNA survey as presented.
So this is in the packet. The accreditation committee worked on this as part of the comprehensive needs assessment for crafting the strategic plan for the Office of Public Instruction. So we're going to interview, survey three groups with the questions that are delineated in that document. And we have significant student data, student data already from earlier in the year. And I said, so there are some committee members here. Seth Barker's also on that committee. Yeah, and so I, I'm hopeful in February and March we'll have the, the OPI strategic plan. And just one kind of context for everybody, like the strategic plan that we did with Skip back in 2022, I asked them if we could just submit that. They said no. But it has like most of the things that we really want to measure on. So this is a good tune-up to that plan. And really, OPI is, is almost exclusively like, what are you going to do to get your two students test scores up? That, that's what they want to see.
Anything else, guys? Seeing none, call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll, I'll call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Great, thanks, everyone. Next meeting Tuesday, oh, February 13, 3:45?
Yep.
Great, thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.